Thank you both for coming in. Thank you all for joining us. The Columbians Editorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Camas City Council. I'm Greg Jane, I'm the editorial page editor at the Columbian, and I'll have the other board members introduce themselves.
Will Campbell, editor.
Ben Campbell, publisher.
Colin Keller, I'm the assistant news editor.
And I'm Craig Brown, I'm a member of the editorial board.
And before we move on, as I think I mentioned beforehand, we are recording this, we will post it unedited on our website for the benefit of our readers. And with that, we'll move on to the candidates. Please take just one to two minutes, give a brief background, explain why you were running for this position, and then after that, we'll move on to specific policy questions. So to start with, nervous.
Thank you. So my name is Marilyn Burke, it's in Jerk Not Bork, it's in dork, for anyone who sees that in print. I am running for reelection. I was elected to council in 2021. When I ran in 2021, it was kind of a, there was an opening, and I'm a public servant, Jerel, and I share that in common. I thought, you know what, I'm gonna run for city council, so I did. And then I got elected, and I, no one was more naive than I was. Part of my reason to run for reelection is because, I won't pretend that I've got it all figured out, but I've learned so much in the last four years about city policy, about municipal code, about, you know, fire and public safety and those types of things, that I am poised to make a bigger difference. I was always raised to make a difference wherever I went, and I'm poised now, with my background knowledge, thirty-seven years in Camas, ironically, thirty-seven years in public education, I just retired. So I'm running to share those, that skillset of critical conversations and active listening and solution finding.
Great, thank you.
Jerel Niles, I have been in Camas for twenty-five years, and so I've raised my family there. They came when they were all very young, and so I've been a part of the community for quite a long time. Kids have been in the school system, one of them under Marilyn, so that was good. And I decided to run, not necessarily for city council, but I decided to get involved, probably now fifteen years ago, when I had an issue across the street with some building and some things that happened during planning, and I was gonna be a complainer, and instead I decided to come be a part of what the process was. And so I volunteered on the Park and Commission Committee, and ended up chairing that committee, because I didn't have a business in downtown. It made it easier for me to be a little more unbiased than everybody else. And I did that for quite a while, until they asked me to join the Planning Commission. So I've been on the Planning Commission for quite a few years now, the vice chair there. And I've always watched how our city operates, and one of the main reasons that I decided to run was because I felt like I didn't have as much information as what I felt like I should have. And being just a normal community member, I felt like there was a place where I could help with clarity, with some of the strategy that we need to do, we need to have as a city. We are a vibrant city. We're no longer a small town that I moved into when I was a lot younger. And as we grow, and what I've seen on the Planning Commission, we've needed to be strategic in the way we grow. And in the same way, the city needs to be strategic with budgeting and with the way that we run things. And so the RFA was a big part of my decision process at the beginning of the year. Totally support our emergency services, especially our firefighters and our police department, and they're a big part of why I want to be involved, and I just want to serve. And I feel like just having the common sense of the community and being able to be a good listener. I've been a pastor for forty-five years now, and so I've learned how to lead in a different way. I don't lead from the top down, I lead from the bottom up. And I think that's the way that our leadership in our city government should be, as well as all the way to the national level. So I'm just happy to be here, and I'm happy to be a part of the fun of this. And a lot of it's fun, a lot of it is frustrating, but mostly it's been really good to be out in the community and talking to our neighbors and friends.
Great, well, thank you, and thanks again, both of you for coming.
Thank you so much.
I want to start with, obviously, one of the big issues facing Camas and all cities in the area is homelessness. How would you assess what the city council, how it has approached homelessness, and where should it go from here? We'll start with Jerel.
Sure. I just spent last week quite a bit of time with Chief Jones there, the police department. We talked a lot about the homeless population and what the problems are that we're facing in the city. We don't see it as intense as maybe Portland or Seattle, but we definitely have an issue with our homeless. And I tend to look at the homeless situation in a multiple ways, multiple ways. One is our students. You know, we have a lot of students that are couch surfers. And how do we support them? How do we support people that are supporting them? Obviously, we have illegal camping in parks and things like that, that we've been trying to do a good job with, monitoring, making sure that it's safe for our community, for our kids to be able to have green spaces to go play in. It's one of those issues that I feel like, as a city, we can do some things, but I also am of the opinion that there are a lot of private institutions and nonprofits that really have a good handle on these things too. So I'd like that to be some of the things in our arsenal. I call it our tool belt. You know, as a city, we can do things, kind of like what we've done in just the last few months with the RV camping ordinances and things like that, which I feel like got a little bit of an overreach when it came to the RV situation, which has been corrected in the last session. But we need to have other places. As a pastor, as a church, we do a lot with our homeless. We spend a lot of time with seeing what we can do to help. We have quite a few people that are in intermediate housing, that we can help out, that get bused to our church, that we can feed every Sunday. In the past, we've taken food out to the homeless camps and really learning the difference between people who are there because of addiction and people that are there just because of circumstances. And most of the time, it's such a great experience to just go out and spend time with them, sitting in chairs and talking, barbecuing together. We don't just do it for them, they come and help, and so it's a lot of fun. But at the same time, how do we address our lack of housing? How do we address the ability to have affordable housing that doesn't cause more issues in the long run? Because I think that sometimes we throw a shoe at the wall, and it just causes things to be less fortunate than what they could be if we're more strategic with the way we do things. So ultimately, bottom line is, I would like to see us partner with a lot of nonprofits that have a lot of good solutions, a lot of good councillors that come into the situation with knowledge and learn from them, because we cannot solve it as a city, we can just assist as we go forward.
Yeah, and you mentioned a lack of housing. How should the city council address that? What can they do specifically?
Well, being on the Planning Commission, I know that we've had a lot of mandates, for lack of a better term, coming down from the state level of trying to create affordable housing in our market. Camas is a hard place to find a place to do affordable housing. My kids, I've got seven kids, five of my own and two of my nephews that I took in when my brother passed away. And in the midst of that, all of them worked two jobs for their two parent households, and they still couldn't afford to necessarily even get an apartment in Camas. They live in Vancouver, Hazeldale, surrounding areas, but it's very difficult to have the ability to legislate how we bring in builders, how we bring in housing, that causes there to be an ability to have affordable housing. Now, I look at affordable housing, I make sure that everybody understands it's not low-income housing, it's affordable housing. And what is affordable housing in our community? When you have such a top range of housing that we have in Camas, all the way down to lower-end housing, can we build apartments or structures that would let people have something that's affordable for a single-income home, a single mother, single father? It's really almost out of reach, and so the market bears what the market bears, and right now...
But do you think the city council should take steps to promote?
I think we have, you know, even in planning, we've tried to make sure that we give incentives for there to be affordable housing in new development, whether it's apartments or housing units. And we can do so much, but we can't mandate builders to build lesser opportunities that cost less, because it's expensive to build right now. And so we can do what we can do. I don't think that we can ever get to the point to where we'll have affordable housing for all. Maybe for some, but we just don't have, right now, what it needs to be able to say, we're gonna put a brick-and-mortar building here that's gonna have a thousand-dollar rent. There's nowhere in our city that I can see that that would function, not without a lot of kickback. It'd be a nice thing to accomplish, but I just don't see it happening right now.
Marilyn, how would you assess the city's approach?
Well, you know, we're trying to determine what is the problem that we're trying to solve. So a couple of years back, we passed an ordinance that prohibited camping, illegal camping, near schools and near waterways and things like that. And then a decision was overturned, and we were able to be a little more specific about that. And Jerel's right when he says, you don't have a huge homeless population in Camas. As a school district person, I knew a lot about the kids that were couch surfing. There's a lot of kids that are unhoused, but you wouldn't consider them homeless, right? Because they do have a place to stay. I think that there's a shortage of mental health resources that could come to bear against our people who are unhoused. And Jerel, I mean to comment about addressing, or learn the difference between addiction and those who are just choosing to be homeless. You know, you can't force people to accept help. And I think in our town, our officers have been challenged by some of our people who are choosing to be unhoused, who aren't interested in resources. We have a thing called the care team, which is a registered nurse, fire personnel, and they try to gather the people who need assistance, get them, get their medications fulfilled, get the medical assistance if necessary. And so that's a tremendous resource in our area.
When was that started?
I'm not sure when it was started, but it's been in place for at least three years, so I'm not sure. We, I was very interested in that. I have a daughter who has chosen a path that has led her to be homeless. And so this is an area that I hope to continue to serve in. There's the Echo Group, you know, regionally, that I'm hoping to be applied to, so I'm looking forward to that. One of your, in your newspaper, there was a statement that I wrote down, "Self-defeat homelessness strategies are self-defeating if unhoused people are not presented with a Bible alternative." So we can legislate, you can't camp here, but where can they camp? You know, those resources that you mentioned, like where can they? As a school principal, I used to open my school as a warming shelter. I used to provide, you know, meals for families. Anytime we had anything, we would provide dinner. Now, spaghetti usually, right? But the kids would all eat spaghetti. So homelessness is not just a city issue, it's a human issue. And Jerel mentioned, you know, we have a couple of people that are known by name in our downtown area, and we do give them coffee, and I've seen them come into restaurants and receive a warm beverage and things like that. So could we do more? Yes, we can all do more.
You know, one Vancouver city official told us that Camas' approach is to say, go to Vancouver, they have services. Is that accurate? Is that fair?
You know, I have never heard anyone in Camas say, leave our community. What we've said is, can we offer you some resources? And perhaps resources might have been in Vancouver, I don't really know. Suicidal aviation, though, you know, the resources in Vancouver, we don't have a hospital in Camas. So, you know, we are a community who embraces our, we embrace our people, whether they have a house or they don't have a house, you know. So I've never heard anyone say that, I've never, that's never been expressed around me. I think that when I was in Spokane recently at a conference, Spokane people said, well, some city, I can't remember, I think it was San Francisco, they're sending, they're putting all the homeless people on buses and bringing them into, you know, to the Spokane area. So I think, you know, gotta be careful about how we talk about unhoused people. Instead of using "they", "them", these are human beings, right? And they're there for a reason. Now, that doesn't mean that Vancouver sent them to us, or we're trying to send people to Vancouver. We're trying to take care of them, that's what we're trying to do. We're passionate about this.
Just to point to that statement, because most places know that if you're in the suburbs or you're in part of a bigger town, we don't have the resources that Vancouver or Portland does. And so if we do point people to places in Vancouver or Portland, there's strategy behind it, not to get rid of them, but to actually offer them something that's viable. I think that one of the things you said about the students, we've had people in the past, obviously, having student, our kids in schools, that had friends that were homeless for a time, you know. And I think there's a difference between choosing to be homeless and going through a hard situation in a season. And so in that season, what we offered was to have them bring, somebody bring an RV and put it, because we have a long pad in front of our house, and let them stay there for a little while. Now, that wouldn't be legal now in Portland, or in Camas. We wouldn't be able to do that anymore.
Not necessarily true.
Well, for how long? I mean, and so that's where we started. And that's, I was one of the ones, I think, when the RV ordinance came out, that I was pretty vocal about it, because I don't want to take away our homeowners' opportunities to store their RVs and to have places to put them. And so I was pretty vocal about it as well, and I saw that it was changed, which was good. They decided to make it an undetermined amount of time. But that's, I think, where we can help as individuals, is to say, I've got a couch for you. But even sometimes better, I've got a friend with an RV, I can pull it in for a little while. Why don't you stay here until you get back on your feet? You can use our facilities, you can use our laundry, and let's help you get going again. And I think that should be all of our goal, is to get people to a point where they're able to stand on their feet again. That's the whole point of this, and so...
Along those lines, I'll go quick. Both of you mentioned illegal camping. Does that mean, should that be prosecuted if somebody is camping illegally, that's against the law? What's the approach to that?
Well, our police officers take a very empathetic approach to that. And we'll talk to the people, what resources can we offer? You can't be here because this isn't, you can't legally camp here. And they'll do a couple of touches. Now, you know, if people choose not to move, they would likely be cited, right? And then the police have gone in and actually helped people to find a different place. That's not near a school, near a waterway, something like that. We're not trying to put people in jail, what's the point of that, right? Maybe they'd be dry there, right? But you can't find a person who doesn't have resources, so it's an empathetic approach.
Yeah, I think that that's where that comment came from, is you're sending people into Vancouver, because that's right now our alternatives, it's to be able to put them there. We had a gentleman, which I'm sure Marilyn would know who it was, a few years ago, when we had our church in downtown Camas. He would come out from the bridge, and he would come to church every Sunday morning. He would use our wifi to try to find a job, and we ended up raising funds for him. It was very, just on a story note, he was with us for about a year and a half, and finally got into the Veterans Administration, put into a program down in Arizona. And so we raised the funds for him to get the bus ticket to get there and everything. And so when we raised the money, we took a special offering for him, and he didn't know it was for him. And he came in and wanted to give money to the special operator, because he didn't know it was for him. And so when we presented it to him during the service, he said, what are you doing? I was gonna give to this. So he wanted to tie ten percent back to the church out of everything that was given to him, because he knew he had a family there, and that's what we all really need. We need people who care about us, people who are family, and I think that's how our police department deals with this as well. They don't look at people as trying to break the law, they're just trying to help them find a solution that's better than what they're experiencing right now, while protecting the community at large.
I think we're fortunate in that we know who our homeless people are, right? I mean, I live very near downtown, why pointing, but I live very near downtown, and so there's a, the Mill Ditch runs, you know. So the people, you know, camp there, so they're eligible to be there. And so, you know, we know who they are, they know that we care about them. Again, they, right? There could be some of which we're unaware. I won't pretend that we know all of the people who might need our center of help.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, Marilyn, what's your, what's your perspective on those RV camping ordinance and how it's coming to fruition?
I'm so glad you asked that question, because it came up. So again, what problem were we trying to solve? So we were trying to solve a problem. We were presented, our staff and our attorney, you know, come through municipal code. We were trying to solve a problem where there are some RVs in a park, by our skate park in the parking lot. Shouldn't be them. And it was causing neighbors consternation, you know, trash and, you know, concern about the kids who's in the skate park. And so they presented us with an ordinance, they, being the staff, presented with an ordinance. And I was like, okay, what problem are we trying to solve here? And we ended up passing it that night, first pass. And then it wasn't, you know, it wasn't, that evening, I went home, I'm like, wait a minute. And so we came back the next time, and I called myself out in front of, you know, God and everybody, and said, I'm really, I have some reservations about this ordinance, I need to take another look at it. And so then we did, we looked at it, we took it apart, we took public comment. The problem that I, what I had a problem with was infringing on property owners' rights. If I have an RV, like I was raised in a camping family, we didn't have much money. My parents were school teachers, and so we camp, that's what we did, it's very inexpensive. So we parked our trailer on our property, right? And so why would we, why would we, as a council, say, you can't park that on your property? Well, some people believe, and a person said in a council meeting, that we can agree that, you know, RVs are eyesores. We can, I do not agree, I do not agree. There are some very, very nice trailers out there that, they're costing thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. And so, long story short, you know, we revised it so that, what initially had said was, you can park your trailer for loading and unloading for three days or something like that. Well, that's not reasonable, and...
Yeah, I think it was twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours, yeah.
People can't afford necessarily to store a trailer, nor could they find a place to store a trailer. And so through all of that, we ended up with, as Jerel mentioned, you can, you can park your car for a reasonable amount of time, a reasonable amount of time. Now, it's important to note that you're not driving around looking for illegally parked RVs and campers. This would be a complaint system, so you'd have to complain about my trailer in my yard, right? And I hope that you have a conversation with your neighbors about that. Another part of the RV ordinance that originally said, you couldn't, you could park it in your yard, but there had to be a screen in place. Well, look, I don't have a lot of money, right? And so why would I, why would I, why would we require our residents to plant things that didn't already exist merely to hide their RV? And so there's, you know, regulations about you can park it in the side yard, unless your geography will allow that, then you can park it in the front yard. Ultimately, it ended up being a resolution that we were able to pass. Almost unanimously, one person voted against it, because he didn't agree with the language of reasonable time, like how is that enforceable? So I think that that was an exercise in humility for me to come forward and say, look at, that was an unintended consequence, yeah, I'm sorry about that, I want to talk about that some more. So we had the opportunity to make a change, and that's really what government should be about, I think. Thanks for asking that question.
I think that's where most of the frustration came in, is that people had seen what had passed, and went, why would they ever pass this the way it was? We're making the city become an HOA rather than the city. Let this HOAs decide what they're gonna live in and how they're gonna dictate how people can park their RVs or their boats or their storage. Again, we were dealing with, as a city, a problem with people leaving RVs on the road, in roadways, which we still have, and it ended up hurting the homeowners. And that's where a lot of the frustration came in, as the community, and that's what I felt.
I'm not sure that we have had, as a council member, I have not heard of one single complaint about a trailer in a person's neighborhood or yard. Problem we were trying to solve was at the skate park, right? And so...
Well, and that's what I was saying. I think that the overreach caused the community then to say, why are you coming after my trailer that's been in my yard for ten years, and I use it when I use it? And to have solved that problem. And I think that that's where we need more strategy, that's where we need to have more common sense thinking, where we say, this doesn't look good the way it is. Somebody had a great thought process, but they went too far. And then having the community have to come out and then show up at city council and say, this isn't fair, don't do this to me. We have so many of those.
Yeah. So what do you, both of you think about having the time amount be just labels or reasonable time? And do you think that that could change or is it wrong to change?
I think... Go ahead.
It's a, it's a, it's a complaint-based system. And I am one who, I don't have an HOA, and I am happy about that.
Yeah.
Because I should get to do with my property, and as long as it's not a safety concern. Some people said having an RV on your property is a safety concern, I disagree. Unless, you know what, someone, I don't know, caught on fire or something, right? So I, there was a motion made at the, at the last meeting to change it to five days, and it did not get a second. So all the councillors who were present, we chose not to amend it, to be specific. Because then, for, in my opinion, I can't speak for the other councillors, then you have this thing, okay, so now it's five days. Okay, well then, how do you then enforce that?
But do you think that just labeling it being a reasonable amount of time is, that's...
I do believe that's, and that's why I voted the way I did, yeah. That's why I didn't second that motion.
Yeah, you think that'll change?
I mean, what we've proven by this exercise is that we can always bring things back and reassess them. We don't have, you know, blatant disrespect of neighbors and RVs parked inappropriately in our town. You know, like I said, I live near downtown, and there's a house that has a camper and an RV. Well, I don't, that doesn't bother me, right? Now, I don't live across the street from them, but if I did, and that bothered me, now there's a mechanism to cause that to be different. And there's also, the RV ordinance includes a thing about living, how long can you, can someone live in there? If you have people visiting from out of town, could they stay in the RV? Well, yes, they could, based on this ordinance, and they always could.
Jerel, you think the reasonable amount of time?
I think it's a little bit of a cop-out. I think that they needed to deal with it and take it probably away. We had, the one councillor that did vote against it was not just upset about the reasonable doubt. I actually spent some time with him, and he showed me pictures of his neighborhood, of the boats and the RVs, and said, do you want this in your neighborhood? We need to get rid of these. So he was very adamant. He didn't want to have anybody to be able to park their RVs, their recreational vehicles anywhere on their property, if they were in sight. And so that's the kind of thing that we have to be very careful as a city, because, again, I agree with Marilyn, that there are times where we put things in there that can be a little confusing, because what's the definition of reasonable time? How do we, how do we enforce that? Is it in there just so that we can say, okay, we don't like that particular one, we're gonna use this ordinance to enforce that you need to move it, when somebody else down the road has one that might look a little newer, it's okay to be there? So I think it does leave too much gray area for law enforcement to actually enforce. And again, as Marilyn said, they're not out there trying to enforce those ordinance, which to me means that I don't think that we necessarily have to have anything about private property in that ordinance. I probably would have been one to stand up against that and say, no, we're talking about a specific instance where we have people using recreational vehicles to park in parking lots on the street, and they're just parking them there and creating junk piles around them, and we should deal with the specifics of the problem, not try to open it up so that we seem fair.
I'll just make one final comment about that, and that is, it's important to note that a municipal code already existed, which was incorporated into this resolution. We didn't, we didn't crack that, it was already in code, that you could do certain things and you couldn't do other things. The very last thing I'll say about this is that it's a slippery slope when, when people in privilege try to control the property of others. And that is something that I, that I will, I have on record many times during council meetings, talked about, people should be able to do what they want to with their property, if they're, as long as they're not hurting someone else. And so making judgments about what is an acceptable and what is not an acceptable RV, that's, we shouldn't be making those calls as humans. You know, go talk to your neighbor if there's a problem, see if you can help, right? So...
Great, thanks. So we'll move on, Craig. Sure. So there's been some talk about redeveloping the George Pacific property. I'm wondering what your vision is for that site and what the city's role should be in that. So now, you want to start?
Yes, I would love to. I think that that area is, has tremendous potential to be, you know, the Vancouver waterfront is absolutely gorgeous downtown, and there's a lot of waterfront. That said, that is private property, right? It's private property, it is not for sale. Now, I am the president of the Downtown Camas Association, and so we've long discussed this, the downtown mill district, as, you know, Camas would not exist if it weren't for that paper mill. So being mindful and being respectful of the founding families, who many still live and work in Camas, and the mill is still operational. So those two things can be seen as, at odds with one another. And so we have a downtown sub-area plan, and that's been under, undergoing work through Alan Peters, our director of community development, from us. And, you know, we've, I sit on the DCA city team, developing that plan and overviewing it, and, you know, talking with people, and what do you think it should be and all that. Well, again, being respectful of the owners of the mill, they've been very clear that they don't intend to vacate that property for twenty years or more. However, there's no reason why we can't have an overlay of that area. What might that look like in the future? And I think not doing that is kind of, is, is, like, not a waste of our time, but now is the time to do that, so that people can see those possibilities. There is some property that was for sale, now it's not for sale, so the mill property is just not for sale. We will see some deconstruction of some of the buildings, because they've been decommissioned. And so I was recently in a meeting with the Department of Ecology Representative, the CAG, the community advisory group that's related to the mill property, and she was discussing the process. Well, so, I wish I had those tapes in front of me, but several years ago, an order was given to the... the mill owners to begin this process of assessing what contaminants might exist. Could be some, there probably will be some, right? But 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 that process takes a tremendous amount of time. And so I was in the in the meeting with Maddie from the Department of Ecology and listening to her talk about the processes, though the report comes to her and then it goes to the accommodation and then everyone makes comments and then it goes back to the mill. The mill does some work and then they send it out again. So that's several iterations that need to be gone through. I know that there are people who are impatient and I tend to be an impatient person, truth be told, like, you know. I think that there is significant potential for that area. And okay, like I said, I think some people, well, some people have said to me, why is the city afraid to engage with the mill? The city's not afraid to engage with the mill. We talk to those to the mill manager all the time. And so that's how we know that they're continuing to operate, what buildings are coming down first and things like that. So it's kind of a roundabout response, but it's a tremendous resource that the city does not own. City, however, is working on plans to like, what might that look like when you have the opportunity to default to those discussions?
Yes, Chris, would it be, what kind of development would be there in, say, twenty years, thirty years?
Oh, definitely mixed use. I I see, you know, like education and housing and, you know, restaurants in a viable district that would provide some housing that we're so desperately in need of and you know, conserve the riverfront as much as possible. There's some beautiful things happening in our community on both sides of the river. So I know there might be a question about zoning. The city, we've already changed our, what's allowed in particular zoning areas. So you can, you don't need to change the zoning, you just change the uses, the available uses. And so that's already been done. There's a letter been written to the Department of Ecology stating that that is our goal ultimately, eventually to be able to have that site for mixed use. When it becomes available, right? It's not probably bad.
You know, I I think it's a great dream. Um, I I do understand as well, it's not for sale, it's not available right now. And so I kind of disagree. I don't think the city should be spending any money on trying to come up with a plan for it right now. I think we have too many other things that need our finances. We need to support our fire department. We need to support our police department. We are in budget shortfalls right now. So any funds spent on that right now is probably not a a good use of our time or our money. Um, I think that we could go to outside sources and say, you can look at it and and make some ideas and create some some architectural drawings of what it might look like. But it's a long ways away. Even if they decide to sell, there is years and years and years of cleanup happening in that site. Uh, it's, the potential is amazing. We've got beautiful riverfront. Uh, after we clean up the slough area, then there's going to be a beautiful area for people to walk along and to spend time at the water. But yeah, mixed use is great. That's would be my vision. You'd have to have some draw to the outside communities. Which we already do in Camas. Camas is very good at drawing people into our community and uh, we see some of the best events happening downtown that draw people all the way all over the Northwest come for those. And so just imagine if it was a James Beard type facility where you had market stalls and restaurants and and maybe apartments in the upstairs and office space. Um, the the potential is unlimited. It's it's a beautiful site. Um, but again, I don't want to, as a city, and as a community member, I wouldn't want to see our city spend money on trying to develop anything as far as a plan right now until we have some kind of firm commitment that we have a date in mind. Um, and even then, there are so many contractors out there that would jump on the on the process to be able to put something together for us with no cost to the city until we get to that point.
Uh, sure. So let's uh uh move north a little bit, talk about the area in northern Vancouver.
Sure.
That seems more likely to be developed for the mill property. What can the city do to try to encourage uh affordable housing options in that area?
Yeah, I think that we've already started. We've been doing, working on the North Shore project for years already. Uh, we have been a part of the process as the planning commission. Uh, we have talked about what it looks like to zone in ways that cause manufacturers to come in, for big companies to come in, but yet still remain a place where it's going to feel like another part of our downtown where you have winding streets and and coffee shops and stores. And it's not everybody's idea of the perfect solution for that area. I think a lot of people still love our green space, want to keep it that way. Um, but as we grow, uh, we need to be strategic in the way we grow. And so incentives for the mixed use that we were just talking about, having stores on the bottom level and and maybe some living areas on the top. But also give builders incentives to have places where they can make their money, but also places where they can have people come in at an affordable rate. So we draw in a a mixed community. I think that we thrive as a community when we have all aspects of our community standards. So whether you are able to live in a house like I do that was built in the sixties or you have a brand new house up on Prune Hill. Uh, you should be comfortable there. And that's, that's our goal is to make sure that we have a place for everybody. Uh, parks, green spaces, leaving trees everywhere that we possibly can so that we aren't environmentally unsensitive, insensitive. I think even if you look at Prune Hill, the the things that happened when that was developed and now we're dealing with the bioswallow failure uh, that's causing our lake to not be in in great form. Uh, we need to be very mindful of how we develop up there because we have another sloping hill that comes down to our lake. And so strategic and and wise about the way we do things. And I think that we built in some of those incentives for affordable housing already, even in the planning stage.
That's true, Marilyn. What's the city doing and what else we've done?
We could always do more. We could always do more. So um, the North Shore Subarea Plan does have all the things that Gerald described. You know, we need to diversify revenue in our city. So having the plan include merchants, you know, large and small to diversify the tax base will be really important to our budget, generally speaking. Just in terms of affordability, when I first joined the council um, it was one of my first votes was related to the Livingston, which is out of your flight with the Livingston. It's a new high rise, you know, for Camas, like five, six, six floors, I mean. Is they're having a grand opening tomorrow evening. I don't know if y'all are coming, but um, just to see what that looks like. So it's got, you know, merchants on the bottom and that's what Gerald's speaking of. Um, continuing to, okay, so I brought that up because at the time, I was, I was wondering, what about affordability in Camas? This is when I, you know, it's so naive, right? What about affordability in Camas? Oh, we're building a we're building an apartment building. So how many of those will be affordable, right? So there are some tax incentives and there's an eight year incentive and a twelve year incentive and this builder had already, they had our, the the planning department had already approved an eight year.
Tax incentive.
Yeah, thank you. So if they had a twelve year, so it was less less borrow my words. Incentive for them to have apartments be less expensive. And so there's a big, huge discussion about that that continues to this day. About, you know, you could force affordable housing, but then the developers pass those costs along one way or another. And so it's an interesting kind of a dynamic where we need affordable housing, yet when we in our town, we propose multifamily housing, there's a tremendous community outcry. And so this kind of goes back to the privilege that I mentioned earlier. You know, people are interested in affordable housing, low income housing potentially. If it's not in their neighborhood. And I don't think that Camas is different necessarily from that, or we are a small community and so we tend to be pretty vocal out there. I think that having a few more of these places like the Livingston go up, Clara Flats going up in Camas, very pretty, very stylish. They're looking good. Having North Shore, some um multifamily units going up in there, although that's not what I'm seeing so far. I think people need to get sort of accustomed to that. The the school district could certainly use the enrollment, you know, enrollment declined during the COVID years and it still hasn't recovered for the city, for the District of Camas. So I I get, you know, the question of, you know, could we do more? Yeah. Hey, could you more?
I think that that we've done a pretty good job at trying to maintain the feel of Camas while still trying to provide more apartments and in multi-use facilities. Um, even in Green Mountain, you know, we, I was on the design review committee when we were approving whether or not that would go forward in the design structure that had already been presented to us. And I actually declined to allow it to go forward the way it was because when I looked at the designs, it looked like an army barracks. They were just, here you have these five hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar homes surrounding in the Green Mountain area. And then we're going to have just blocks of apartments that had no character. And so I think I offended the poor builder, but at the same time, you know, our design review is that for that purpose, we want to have affordable housing. We want to have multifamily structures. But we also wanted to look and feel like it fits in our community. And so now they're built, they have dormers, they have balconies, they have different things that make them look more presentable to their neighbors around them. So they're not just staring at a big blank wall. Um, and so we did want to be careful on how we do it, but I think we're moving forward in the right way. We've, we've gone through lots of ideas from um row homes to um small home villages. Uh, and not all of them are going to work in Camas, but some of them do. And um, the ADUs are another big part of what we've been doing for affordable housing. Um, being able to lift some of those regulations so that it's easier to build an ADU. Uh, just recently, we were trying to get the ADU idea of what it's going to look like. And it came to us as a planning commission that it needed to match the existing home by its siding, by its windows, by everything. And I just brought up this I, you know, my home was built in the sixties. If I'm going to build a new structure, I don't want it to match the home that I, that was built in the sixties. Why would we do that to people? And so we did change it. And so now it just needs to have a characteristic of the existing home. And so those are the kind of things that having wise strategic conversations, stop it before it goes too far. And then we have the public outcry that says, this is a stupid idea. Um, but now it's more palatable. Uh, whether or not you can have a a structure in your backyard that overlooks your neighbor's yard. You know, that was another big draw for everybody to try to fight, you know, I don't want my neighbor looking in my backyard. But the regulation was going to be such that it would just preclude me from doing almost anything in my backyard when we already looked at our neighbor's backyard most of the time. If you have a two-story house, you can see into your neighbor's backyard unless they build a big wall.
So that idea of offsetting windows.
Yeah. So then you actually get more detailed in the structure rather than just overlaying it and saying, we don't want you to do this, we don't want you to do this, and you have to do this. We want to be strategic and say, we understand as a homeowner, there are certain things that you want to do as you go forward. And we're not going to regulate you out of being able to even start the project. And so that's my goal is the city is that we create more opportunities and don't get stuck on just one thing. But actually have multiple ways that we can help reduce the cost of living.
Like one size does nothing.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, there is a debate going on between the small cities over CTRAM.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to know where you both stand, specifically with Camas. If the court should decide that the state's rule regarding proportionality is reasonable and should stand. Would you support Camas withdrawing from Camas? And if so.
From CTRAM?
From CTRAM, yes, excuse me. It's already been a long day.
And we're the nervous ones.
Anyway, what is your position on this, this debate right now with Camas and its role in CTRAM?
You know, I I was reading, you know, a paper, I read it every morning with my, once I get my my grandson and his guardians, once I get him on the school bus, I sit down and and I was reading about, uh, Camas officials that said something about uh, withdrawing from CTRAM. So I just want to be very clear. One person said that and it was in a workshop environment. It was our mayor. And the idea that you know, we're so five, five million dollars from Camas residents. It's not the city's money. It's a tax, right? It goes to CTRAM. We're only getting two million dollars in services. Well, that's a hard pill to swallow, right? However, the the people that are receiving those two million dollars in services need transportation. And so if your question is, do I support pulling out of CTRAM? I do not. You know, what what would be the alternatives to our residents who need to get to work? Get to the doctor, you know, get their kids to school. That that is a withdrawing would only work if we had a viable alternative, right? We place that system with another system. We're still not getting that money. That money's not going to come to Camas, right? It's still not, it's not Camas' money. It goes to this countywide you know, consortium. So um, my feeling about this and my advocacy will continue to be increase the services, right? So we had a presentation recently from CTRAM and they're talking about all the different routes that they want to bring out to Camas and we're sure both, great, that's fantastic. You should definitely do that. They're not sure how they'll pay for that, right? Well, we're, you know, the the Camas residents contribute five million dollars. Now Vancouver, they contribute, they receive more services, which makes sense, right? They're in this, you know, this this hub. Um, the plan was, you know, bringing routes, not going through Fisher's Landing, for example, but going to, you know, the back roads and picking up people over there. So you know, insisting upon um services that are commensurate with what our residents are paying, that is the way to go. Suddenly not providing transportation to our residents, that makes zero sense to me. And then what? The bus is going to just drive right through Camas and then still go to Peshawal? Makes zero sense. So I think, you know, I understand the mayor's frustration. We're in tight budgetary times. It doesn't feel right that that our residents end up contributing that amount of money. How do we increase ridership? You know, what do we do differently? How do we, how do we um market that? You know, what what kinds of, you know, do we, do they provide different bus stops instead of just a sign in the ground? Maybe they have a covered shelter where people can, you know, dry and 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 ride the bus. So that you know, we've, we've heard a lot from councillor Hind who sits on that team about the proportionality and about the shall, you know, becoming may, shall becoming may and then back to shall. And there's just a lot of politics represented in that right now. I am a I'm an advocate for the residents of Camas and uh, so no, I'm not in favor of seceding from the CTRAM.
I have a differing opinion just because, um, and I don't think it was just the mayor that talked about withdrawing. It was actually Tim Head was quoted in saying that if they continue to do what they thought the state was going to enforce them to do, which is take the smaller towns off of the board. That he would be in favor of withdrawing because we are spending a lot of money. Now, I'm all about saying that if we need to invest into a situation that's beneficial to our entire region, it's not just about Camas, it's about our area. And if we're spending five million and we're getting one point two million dollars back or one point seven, um, then, you know, we're investing. And I I can see that investment is a wise thing for our whole community. But if they take away our voice, then and then try to, and let's just face it, we're not just talking about CTRAM and our system out there. We're talking about the bridge. We're talking about, they want to get this passed. They want to be able to get everything to move through so that we can spend all that money on getting the new bridge built. And because they had people in smaller communities saying this doesn't benefit us, why would we vote to have this go forward? They were thinking to themselves, and this is as a community member. I am going to call it the way it is. They're saying if we get rid of those voices, then we'll get this passed. And so I think councillor Tim Hind and I had a conversation about this, councillor Llewellyn, councillor uh, Sinescu, we've talked about it. And if they force your hand on a certain situation, and I I get it, I get the benefit to the downtown corridor on having Macs come into downtown here. But in reality, for just a mile of line, that's a lot of money. And I think I've read two studies already that for the price of the bridge that they're talking about building on I five, we could build three new bridges. And so um, I'm sure most of you know, the people in Camas would love to have a bridge, right? Going over into Gresham. Uh, it would make life a lot easier for us. And so that's a dream for us too. So even having our community and being able to speak with the voice of our community as as councillor Hind has done um, to say you're willing to invest to a certain point. But if you're going to take our voice out of the situation, then why would you continue to invest? Um, I don't agree that people wouldn't have resources if we pulled out of CTRAM because you still are able to call get a special pickup, you're able to do things like that. Yeah.
To be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah. So so CTRAM.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that it's available. And there are different ways for people to get different places. I know a lot of people that use uh private uh, transportation to get back and forth to doctors' appointments. And honestly, if you're like me, if I look at the buses coming in and out of Camas, even East Vancouver, there's not that many people on them. And even more so on the Macs trains. When I worked in downtown, I can tell you probably ninety percent of the time, there was maybe five percent occupation in any of those Macs trains. So why would we invest in a failing business model? And that's, that's mine as a business side of things, as a manager side of things. Do we as the residents of of Southwest Washington want to continue to invest in a failing business model? And so something's got to change to where it benefits all of us. Uh, not just a few, not just to be able to say, hey, we got light rail across the river. Um, so we need to be wise about that.
I think it bears repeating, however, I think it bears repeating, however, that it, that, I want to be very clear for people listening or watching. That this is not our city council giving C-Trans five million dollars, this is out of the hands of council. So investing is not a choice that we have, it's, it's a tax that is levied on citizens. And so I just want to be very clear about that. I, I, if it were our money, I would have a different response, right? If we controlled that money, I would have a different response, but we do not.
Well, maybe I'm not educated on it because I did hear from councillor Heinz that it is our city that's investing that money. And we do have the opportunity to say we want to withdraw.
But it, so just to clarify, would you be in favor of Camas withdrawing?
If they take our voice away, I would definitely be in consideration.
For, for the small cities, it's my understanding that they have an oversized voice on the C-Trans board in regards to population.
Well, I think that the way it was set up, they tried to do it in a way that would cause the cities to have a voice. Um, if they go according to an over, what you're considering an oversized, it would remove several of those seats out of that board. And so we're not just talking about Camas, we're talking about Battleground Wausheule, we're talking about the centre, we're talking about any of those places that are a smaller community. That would still like to know how the money's spent. And, uh, I think that's still important to have a voice represented there and so.
You know, I agree, Camas is not the same as the centre, it's not the same as Battleground. So those are distinct communities with distinct voices and attitudes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you both are knowledgeable, knowledgeable about local issues, you both seem well-spoken and, uh, it's obviously both care about the city of Camas. Um, what would you say the biggest differences between the two? Do you want to start?
You know, I think that for me, I really, and I, I know Marilyn to a point, I don't know all of the ins and outs of her life. Um, for me, I've always been servant-led, uh, and so for me to be able to be a legitimate voice of the community. And not just one part of the community, but all of the community. I, I don't stop listening if somebody has a different political viewpoint than I do. Um, you know, it's very easy to see that I have, uh, registered Republican. Um, but that doesn't mean that that's my only values, people are my value. I'm a people over politics every time you look, and that's not just a slogan, it really is. Um, I have run before and I didn't garner the support of either party because I said, I'm not going to be a voice box for any party. I want to be a voice box for the people. Um, so I have friends in every area of the political climate. Um, so setting all of that aside, uh, my main concern is for our citizens and neighbors and friends. Uh, I want to make sure that they're seen to have a voice in our legislature. Um, and I, again, I, I heard, I've, I've read quotes, I've seen things happen at city council where, um, somebody has said specifically, they don't need to know what's in this, they just need to vote yes. And that's directly opposing to my viewpoint, we need to educate our community on why we're doing things, what's the purpose behind it? Um, having a good voice, the RFA is a huge, um, red flag to me because I feel like when we aren't honest about where the money is coming from and where it's going. Even with the, uh, vote that was taken, uh, in August, where we had such amazing outcry from our, our community and our firefighters that said, you don't understand. We're going to fires with two people on a truck and we can't do anything if somebody's inside the building. We have to wait for another vehicle to come because we're underfunded and understepped. And so to have then an RFA proposal that says, we'll give you back seventy-one cents on the eighty-eight cents out of your property taxes per thousand dollars. Instead of giving the whole eighty-eight cents back that's been set aside for firefighters, then we need to explain why. And I've had long conversations with councillor Heinz because he was on that committee to look at why we were giving this much back versus that much. And I understood some of those points after I talked to him, but that wasn't in the public anywhere, it didn't tell us why we weren't giving back the seventeen cents that we're keeping in our general fund. And so for me, clarity, transparency, having the ability to say, this is why we're thinking this direction, how do you feel? Instead of saying, you don't need to understand why we're doing it, you just need to know that we've got your best interests in heart. Well, that's great, but it doesn't always work that way. You know, when we close a city pool and try to build a multimillion, it's before your time, so you don't have any responsibility there. But, you know, that gets the, the neighborhoods, the communities in that spot where they feel like you're hiding things from us, you're not telling us everything. And so I believe that we're doing a better job with that, with a lot of the community events, but we can always do better. Marilyn said earlier, there's always room for improvement. And so for me, uh, the biggest thing that I know that I bring is, uh, uh, everybody gets a voice kind of con- uh, conversation with our community. Uh, I'm not going to stand on one agenda and say, this is where we're headed because I want you to fall in line. I don't want to, um, I think Marilyn said at one point during a DEI conversation that, you know, you change the bell schedule so the students will follow the rules. I don't want to have a community where we just change things so that people just fall in line. I want us to have the understanding going forwards so that we can do it together. I always say, unity is not conformity. Unity is just knowing we have a goal in mind and how do we get there together? How would you respond?
I have, well, I have a couple of responses, actually, um, I want to be also go on record, no one has ever said to me, I don't need to know what's in it, I've seen a vote yes, that, those words have never been uttered to me. I don't know, or, you know, who told you that.
It's actually one of your transcripts.
Um, well, I'm sure there are transcripts out there, right, of all the meetings that we've been to over the years. Um, I, that's just not a, that's just not, nobody's ever said that to me, so, um, I, so you asked about differences, many of the, we share many of the same characteristics, both servant leaders. Both passionate, passionately care about our neighbors and our, and our friends and our friends' neighbors, right? We don't, we're not different in that way. Um, we're not different in that we seek clarity and transparency, right? I think, um, as Joel's mentioned, the RFA a couple of times, so I had, um, before I got elected last time, I met with union leaders from all the different, you know, walks of, um, employees. And the one that, the thing that resonated the most with me was three people on an engine. So the law requires that you have to have three people at a location, right? Because, oh, one person has to run the engine, one person cannot go in by themselves, you have to have two people. And so that was this, this Simon Callen intended for me, and I've been advocating for that every single opportunity. And so because of that advocacy, I was asked to sit on the, um, the JPAC, the Joint Political Action Committee with Wausheule, community member, or council members. And we together crafted this regional fire authority document, um, governance, um, budget, you know, that whole thing. So it took months and many, many meetings, sometimes two meetings a week to do that, but I'm a servant, right? I'm, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just, I'm just saying. And so that was a complex issue that was not communicated well before it went to vote in the first place. And so as a person who sat on that committee, that was frustrating to me because we had an agreement about, this is how we're going to communicate. Um, we need, people need to know very clearly, if the RFA passes, now, I, I should first preface this. I'm not allowed to like have an opinion about the RFA, I'm trying to just share facts because I'm, I'm a elected official. So that said, this is what would happen if it passes, this is what would happen if it doesn't pass. And I asked for that type of clarity and didn't receive it. And so that's frustrating, right? When, when people are not understanding, this meeting that, that, um, Joel mentioned in August was heartbreaking. Because so many firefighters were there, I would say thirty, thirty-five were there. And person after person after person had the opinion that we didn't care about them because we weren't trying, we weren't trying to fund this through personal engine. Well, that's just, nothing could be further from the truth. Not only was there not clear communication, but there was some misinformation that was circulating in our community that was simply not true. The most heartbreaking of all was that we were trying to eliminate ten firefighters, which is absolute opposite of what we were trying to do with the regional fire authority. Um, that people believe that to be true. And so I will sit there as often as I have to and receive that input. Because that tells us where we need to do the most work. And that was to, to hopefully gain trust with the firefighters and the, the medics and all those types of things and try to help them understand that, that this is, that's the opposite of what we're trying to do. I think you were initially opposed to the RFA, uh, you had said that you
I voted no on it the first time.
Exactly, because Didn't make any sense, right? And so now with our second go around, um, I, I, um, I feel really proud of the work that we did. I think that that is our opportunity to get three people on an engine and that's really probably the, the, the most I should probably say about that topic.
I'd like to clarify, so are you voting for it?
I will be voting, I still think it's not ideal, but I think it's the only choice we have because this is the last time we can bring this before the voters. Uh, if we have to go back to an ILA, uh, an agreement between Wausheule and Camas, it's not going to be an easy task because our city administrators do not see eye to eye. And so I, I, I have to say, um, I understand that you, that my opponent has worked on the RFA. But she still hasn't garnered the trust of the community or the firefighters in this. We both went before the firefighters' union and asked them for their support and they decided to remain neutral. I'm an unknown quantity. I haven't been in that office before, but they have decided that they aren't going to support either of us, they, at least on a union basis. I've got individuals that are out there campaigning and, and talking for me that are a part of the union because they agree that things need to change. And, and that's the problem with this is, is we can't keep going forward with the same situation and think that it's going to change. This is a bite the bullet moment when it comes to the RFA, it's going to cost taxpayers money. And it costs them more because we're not giving back all of the money that was supposedly set aside out of our property taxes.
So I want to, I want to comment on that because you brought up previously seventy-one cents versus the eighty-eight cents. And that is extremely complex and I'm not trying to be, um, like, what are condescending, okay, so
Competition.
I'm not going to do that either, so. I really meant condescending, I'm, I'm not meaning to do that, I just have a lot of information having sat on the council for this amount of time. And so I, I'm not going to belabor that point, it's related to property taxes, I mean property values, right? And so like why did Wausheule give eighty-eight cents and Camas only gave seventy-one cents? Because property valuation is higher in Camas, so seventy-one cents per thousand equates as, according to the finance director, which I am not, that person, equates to that. So it's kind of an equivalent, um, influx of funds. So another thing I wanted to finish answering your question was a, a big difference that I, that I bring to the council is my fifteen years of experience with the Downtown Camas Association. I bring that up because small businesses are really important to me. And, um, through the, now, now as president, I started out when it was the Downtown Visioning Committee way back in the day, became then a five oh one C three. I've moved out and, and it's a liaison for the school district, then it was a liaison for city council, then I became elected the president. I meet, I have a chance to meet with the merchants on a monthly basis. And we talk about, what is it that you need to be successful in Camas, what barriers can we remove? So a lot of people believe that First Fridays and other events are, are sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and that is not true. It's a Downtown Camas Association, a nonprofit, who stages First Fridays every month, who, um, does, that was very distracting, sorry. Okay.
I agree, might happen again.
Okay, that's fine, I'll be prepared for it next time. Um, that, uh, the plant sale, like gigantic things, the sippin shops, those, that's all the Downtown Camas Association. And we do that through talking with the, the small business owners and providing training. And, you know, how can we increase your sales and that type of marketing? So, um, I think that's a big difference. Um, I also wanted to comment on Jorrell talking about something about changing the bell schedule so the kids follow the rules. I'm not sure what, in what that's referenced to, bell schedules don't encourage rule following. Community building encourages community support, right? So I didn't ring bells at my school because I had kids flexing at different times so that they weren't all in the hallways at the same time and there was no disruption with bells. And so, Doc, we call a bell schedule a first order change, right? And so what we're interested in, and what I'm interested in as a city council, is that second order change, you know? Experience matters and I, and I've heard people say, we need to keep Camas, Camas. Well, I'm just here to say to you that your Camas is not the same as my Camas. Jorrell's Camas is not the same as my Camas, we all have different experiences. I raised three kids in Camas and you have seven kids in Camas, our kids have all experienced different things. We need to be mindful about, about saying, keep Camas, Camas, because then that, that negates a whole population of people who don't feel welcome in Camas. We have those people, we have people, members of the LGBTQIA+ community who don't feel welcome, my daughter is among them. You know, we have people of color who don't necessarily feel welcome in Camas. And so through DCA, through the city council, through my work with homelessness and DEI, which has gotten a bad, um, nickname, right? But how do we encourage everyone to feel belonging in Camas? That's the council person that I am and who I want to continue to be.
Just a
No, I
I think I took too much time with the RFA.
Um, then, and normally we ask for a, give us your final pitch for why voters should support you. I think you both covered that in your last statements. Um, so maybe just give us a final word or real quick, we'll start with Marilyn.
I've devoted, you know, thirty-seven years of my life to the community of Camas and, um, four of them as an elected official. I have a tremendous, uh, wealth of knowledge about our community, you know, the, you know, wards and all. And I, I won't sit here and say that, um, that I have all the answers, I don't. But I certainly have the questions, you know, and I'm willing to ask those questions and dig deep and lift up rocks and, you know, figure out ways that we can continue to prosper. Be a place where our youngsters
Bring kids now, right?
Right, can, can live and grow, um, thrive in the way that they're, they're meant to thrive, you know, see their dreams come true in Camas, the way I, I've seen my dreams come true. So I really appreciate the opportunity to con- continue to serve. That's, I'm a servant leader, we both are, right? And so we both want to serve, I just hope you choose me.
Good, thank you.
Jorrell.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity as well. I think Marilyn is a wonderful person, we get along on a personal basis very well. I do believe that there is room for improvement in this position. I think that we need to be able to have the, uh, commitment of our city leaders to be transparent, to be honest, to be integrous. And, um, that hasn't always shown through. And I'm not throwing any political dirt on Marilyn specifically, I'm just saying as a community, we have not seen the transparency that we'd like to see coming out of city hall. There are a few people that I feel are doing a great job and there are some that I still think are, are not doing as well as what we would like to see, what we feel like we deserve. Um, I do have a differing opinion on a lot of issues when it comes to Camas. I do feel like we have a very diverse, beautiful community where people do feel welcome. I have friends of every walk of life, whether they are in the same way of thinking that I am as a Christian, or they're not a Christian, or they're, or they have a different thought process on identity. We all seem to have a beautiful community together. I don't see anybody out there, at least in my forum, uh, being in my community, that feels like they are not respected, not welcomed. I feel like we're a very welcoming community and I want us to continue that way. So when I say keep Camas, Camas, I mean, keep us the way that we've always been, which is a small community feel in a large city environment now. Um, that welcomes everybody and has fun together, but still knows that we have to be strategic in the way that we move forward. We need to do our homework, we need to know that it's this amount of money. And I, I have to say, it's very important that we know the numbers. We can't just come in ill-informed on, well, we're giving seventy-seven cents back, no, we're not, we're giving seventy-one cents back. And if we are keeping some of that money, why? And if our community doesn't know why, then we aren't going to support it. And our, our FA, and we didn't touch on police, but they're just as understaffed as our fire department and we need to support them just as much. Um, and we can do that, but we are in a rice and beans environment in our city right now. We need to be able to live on a budget and not continue to spend money on outside contractors. We need to make sure that we're spending money wisely. Uh, and so I would call for a forensic audit right away if I got elected so that we could see where are we leaking money? Um, and
And I'm sorry, I'm going to need to stop you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, thank you very much, both of you, for your time.